You used to be able to just, as those three people are just signing in.
Well.
Your name.
Yeah.
First lady for figure.
That's a good question.
Very shame.
So she gets here, we can't start.
Oh, yeah. You haven't heard from her?
I did earlier today.
Okay.
She was coming.
All right.
These teams automatically uploaded.
They haven't gotten close.
I don't know.
No.
Yeah.
I'll upload it.
Smile and on.
No, lungs are hanging on.
It probably did.
I don't think it's automatic. But I think kind of doing.
Yeah, you have steps. You did do it.
There it is.
Ah, there we go.
Right on time.
I pretty much can't remember a time I wasn't on meeting and I didn't remember other than that. But then you can do something.
That lion's here.
That's that.
Um, packing.
No, that's it.
It's just the two pieces of paper.
Ready?
All you're doing is public hearing, that's it.
We ready to go?
I am.
Uh, it being six, uh, 5:30, excuse me, uh, Wednesday, April 13th. Uh, we are meeting tonight to discuss warrant article number 16 to be voted April 30th, 2022 at the business session of town meeting by petition. Quote, shall we adopt the provisions of RSA 40 colon 13, known as SB 2, to allow official ballot voting on all issues before the town of Enfield on the second Tuesday of March? End quote.
Make a motion, we open the public hearing?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The public hearing is now open and we welcome your discussion, your comments, your views.
We have a couple of presentations. I'm going to let Elisa go first. There's just a couple of differences with teams that she wanted to point out before we get started. She'll, she'll do this talk over the next couple of meetings.
Okay, so Microsoft Teams is just a little bit different. Uh, mics are disabled. When you are invited to speak, your mic will be enabled, so you can speak. Raise your hand by using the React icon if you want to speak. You'll be invited. Don't worry if it takes a little while, sometimes it does. Um, you, rest assured, we will call on you. Um, please make sure that when you raise your hand, it's for a comment or question that is germane to the topic being discussed. Today, there's only one topic, so we're good. Your camera icon allows you to turn on and off your camera. Chat has been disabled and we have a live captions option. It's similar to closed captions. If you click on the three dots, more button and scroll down, you can turn on live captions. It will give you, uh, basically what is being said in print. It's not incredibly accurate all the time, so if there's any errors, blame it on technology.
Okay, then I, I prepared a short presentation. So Elisa will pull that up and we'll just go through some slides. It's just a little short presentation outlining SB 2, so people fully understand what the law says and how it would change things. We can go from that slide. SB 2 presentation.
Didn't give them the option.
Okay, so this was submitted by petition, as said. Um, there's the petition article John had already read it. And then it does need to be a three-fifths majority paper ballot vote at town meeting to adopt SB 2.
Do you think I still have to make sure that you know what they're saying?
I don't. Can you go to the next slide?
Okay.
I'll keep talking. You're looking.
I can see the outline.
This is the explanation. It is in town, the town report too, that was provided by the petitioners. The simple arguments that voters should not be required to attend an all-day town meeting in order to vote on all money articles. Residents needing more information on particular article may attend the deliberative session to ask questions, read the annual report for more details, or call the town office with, with other questions. Go ahead. So this is a little more formal. Um, I put this together while Lisa, Elisa put, uh, talking points together and I put this presentation together off those and some other information. But it really breaks it down that you have a first deliberative session that would be, um, done, uh, the following the last Monday in January. So in 2023, the first session would be held February 4th through February 11th. That would be next year if this passes. And then the second session voting day would be, as we do now on town meeting day, there'd be official ballot voting for everything that was on the warrant. So the deliberative session, um, it's pretty much what you think it would be. It's like town meeting. You get together, talk about the warrant articles, have discussion. You can amend the articles. You can amend anything on the floor, the things that you can't do.
Hold on. Just.
Yeah.
Sorry, I have to share it again.
Yeah, or you can alt-tab and it will take you back to the screen you're on.
Okay. Excuse me, unmuted this.
Don't, don't, sorry. I just, I pulled it up so we could see.
Well, yes, we can.
We're learning. Is that good?
So, yeah, warrant articles may be amended at the session. Um, articles wording prescribed by law cannot be amended. Articles that are amended shall be placed on the official ballot as amended going into the ballot, or so the, so the ballot will actually read as it was amended. And no warrant article shall be amended to eliminate the subject matter of the article. So you can change money up and down, those types of things, but you can't change the purpose of the article. The bottom one, but.
I think it's actually the, um, the subject. You can change, you can't change the subject, but it's not the purpose. You can change the intent. So it, it, it's the subject matter that can't change, which is interesting.
Have to look into that if there is going to be a big change.
We, we had this happen in the whole district. And the intent was to, to fire the superintendent. And the superintendent was the subject. And the agreed upon language that had been run through legal was a superintendent. Remains the subject, but it was to thank him.
It was the judge, yeah.
Dave made that motion. Just a, I mean, it's interesting, but it's important.
Yeah, and then that was just a little bit more explanation of that. Yep. Didn't change.
No, it did not change.
Okay, and then voting day is pretty, pretty basic. It's pretty much the same thing that we're doing now. Elected officers and you vote on any questions required by law and all warrant articles as amended in the first session. Um, absentee voting would be allowed, the same polling places, polling hours, everything else stays the same. Um, the default budget, so we would have a default budget as of right now. The default budget is anything, it's pretty much carrying over the same budget minus one-time expenditures that you would have and, and anything else that didn't really need to move forward. So we would create that default budget. There is some legislation right now, um, weaving its way through Concord to, um, I don't know, it makes it completely difficult and tough, but if, if you lowered a line item in the proposed budget, that would stay in the default budget and it, it would really lower your default budget. So we're going to continue to watch that. But as of right now, it's pretty much the same budget minus one-time expenses and things that don't need to be paid for again.
But as I understand it, um, there is no limit on how much a budget can be decreased.
That's not true.
No.
So it could, it could be dropped to 50%?
There's actually an RSA that says it can only be reduced by 10%.
That's a new one now, okay.
Yeah.
Under SB 2.
Under SB 2.
That's because that's the type of requirement.
Yeah.
What about in a regular town meeting?
There's no rule.
Nope.
Not that I know of.
No.
No, we, because when we had, ran into COVID and we wanted to do ballot voting, we, we reached out and did get a legal opinion about whether we could establish a default budget and the answer was categorically no.
Yeah, not a default budget.
Nope, so.
So this is just a little bit more of what I talked about on the default budget. We can, we can put this up, so, on the website when we're done. Go ahead. So just a basic of some of the new dates. Petition articles would have to be turned in by the second Tuesday in January. Um, we didn't put it on there, but there's, there's other, um, notices that we have to place by the second Tuesday in January. Petition articles proposing a bond in excess of $100,000 would be the Friday preceding the second Tuesday in January. Budget hearing would be held on or before the third Tuesday in January. Then warrants shall be posted and available to the general public by the last Monday in January prior to the deliberative session. So you'd know what was being proposed at that time. That wouldn't be the final warrant, if you will. And then the deliberative session would happen, as we said, on between the second Saturdays following the last Monday in January. So next year, again, it would be February 4th through February 11th. We would have to hold that deliberative session. The town report would be available at least one week before voting day, so you'd have time to look at it. That's a little tight timeline. I'd hope we'd get it out a little quicker, but that's what the law states. And then voting day would be held on or before the third Tuesday and it's March, right?
March.
I put January, it's actually March. And that's, that's really all I wrote down. I just wanted to, to give a little overview of what the law says and what, what SB 2 would actually be doing.
So.
Comments from the public?
Petitioners here?
Tracy isn't in the petitioners.
Tracy, are you?
I was not a petitioner for this one, the lead petitioner for this one, but I, I will say that I am in favor of it for similar reasons that I am the lead petitioner on, uh, the one to be dealt with at your next board of selectmen hearing. In that it involves bringing people into the meeting so that when we vote on major issues, I'll use last year's example, the fire engine, for example, or this year's example, which is the major building projects, we would like to know that there's a strong opinion, one way or the other, from the population. I think that's important. And it's, these issues, and I certainly won't mention any little towns that have school boards that begin with a C, should not be decided by less than two dozen people, or, as is the case during COVID last year, uh, decided by, what did we have, 100 and something, I think? You remember?
Eighty, I thought.
Was it 80? I think you're probably right, 80. I would hope this year's decisions on our construction projects would not be decided by 80 people. You'd like to know that they're decided by a larger number of people to get honest opinions. And I think for that reason, SB 2 makes a lot of sense moving forward. I think it will involve more people. I think there'll be bigger discussions. Uh, it'll be very interesting. It'll put some onus on the budget committee to make sure there are plenty of people there because you don't get an opportunity to revise the budget during an SB 2, except for 10%, as you just said. So to make sure that the budget that's proposed is one that people want.
Doctor, I don't think the process of SB 2 will necessarily meet your goals. And for example, um, the school, school has had SB 2 for 30 years now herself. This year at the deliberative session, it was represented by exactly seven Enfield residents. Two school board members, two super residents checklist, my wife and I, and I don't know who the seventh one.
I was missing, I think, I think you miscounted me.
If you think, if you think that's what we said, um, and they didn't change anything this time because nothing was controversial, but how many people would it take to change that? Five of us? Four of us? I mean, you know, I mean, plus from other towns. There was a total of maybe 30 people, 20, 30 people there. You know, you still have to show up and unfortunately, you can actually change, without discussion with anybody that's not there at that first session, change the entire intent of, of many of the articles. And it's been done here locally.
Can I say something?
Uh, I think Dan had his hand up first, then you.
Everything you said, Dr. Vogt, is true, except for one thing. I can amend it as many times as you want, but it's going to be everybody who's voting on it. At town meeting, if it's amended at town meeting and within 10 minutes, you're going to vote on it. As opposed to, you've got six weeks to decide whether or not you want what's been amended. If it's in the case of the budget, then you would vote for the default budget. The other thing that this does that I've had a real problem with is this mandates when the town meeting is going to be. We again, you know, I mean, for the last four years, we haven't had it when it was supposed to be. We keep saying it's because of COVID. Well, I'm sorry, but the other four towns in this district have held their town meeting at the time it was supposed to be. And we could have done it this year because we could have put, had the town meeting in the auditorium at Mascolma that holds 600 people. And we made the decision, instead of that, we're going to do it eight weeks later. And I'm sorry, but that messes everybody up because with this, you can schedule, that you can go to town, you know when town meeting is going to be, you know when the deliberative session is going to be. And I think that's the big thing about SB 2 is the meeting's held, it's held within a short time period, not based on, with all due respect, when the selectmen decide to set. There are a number of people this year who are not going to be going to town meeting because it got moved by two months. That's all I've got to say.
Ms. Brown?
First thing is town meeting is not a requirement, it's a privilege. We are so fortunate to live in New England where we can go to town meeting and decide how we want our town to be run. SB 2 is the worst idea anybody ever had about town government. I remember when we were, we were in New York and my husband was teaching and there was this, a school meeting and a guy stood up and he said, you know, if you don't go and vote, you're going to lose this. And the last thing we need to lose is town meeting. We need to get people to go to town meeting instead of switching to SB 2. We need to provide childcare at town, I emailed you that.
I did.
We need to provide childcare at town meeting. And there needs to be food at town meeting. When we were in Sepphor, the kids that were going to France always put on a lunch to, to raise money to go to France. And people came to town meeting and they came and they ate the lunch and they enjoyed it. And they have had sandwiches and stuff like this at town meeting at the school. COVID shouldn't change town meeting. And that's what you're wanting to do because we couldn't have town meeting for a couple of years because of COVID. We need town meeting. Town meeting is a privilege. We are fortunate to live where we have such a say in town government. I hope everybody in town will come and vote down SB 2.
Yes.
So, a couple of notes here. When, when I was first questioned about why I felt that doing away with town meeting was a bad idea a few weeks ago, uh, in the surprise, the moment, I said, well, all I can remember was I was again it 20 years ago and I'm again it today. I took some time to review my old notes and reform my thoughts on the matter. And I think I'm fairly well ready to answer that question. First, it needs to be understood that SB 2 was primarily an attempt to control spending. It originated from the ultra-conservative wing of the legislature. The notion was that elites controlled the towns via the traditional town meeting and that if more of the public voted, budgets would come down. The desired result did not materialize in most towns and certainly did not in Enfield. Some of the larger towns and the multi-town school districts, traditional meetings had become unwieldy and inefficient, so all-day ballot voting didn't make sense. The traditional meeting just didn't work anymore for them with 500 and 600 people in attendance. But Enfield's the same size today as it was 20 years ago. But I don't, and I don't think anyone's claiming that our town meeting is too large to be managed in person. Nevertheless, we convinced ourselves in 1996 to give it a go. For five years, we were an SB 2 town. But in 2001, the majority of the ballot voters got fed up enough with the process and rejected it in favor of returning to the traditional town meeting. We were the first town in the state to do so. I was one of the leaders of that change and I dug up my old notes to summarize for you now why we went back to the traditional town meeting. Number one, lack of information, no way to get questions answered and hear pros and cons. Now, mind you, I'm nervous, I know everyone in here. I, I suppose it's.
Yeah, I can be.
Number one is lack of information. And mind you, these, these are comments from the, the majority of the people who voted to bring ourselves back to the traditional town meeting because we were an SB 2 town. So the majority of the 700 or 800 people that voted that year said, we're done with this. The ballot was too long, many articles complicated and often misunderstood. So what ended up happening is vote, most votes not based on pluses and minuses, but upon one's best guess as to what was intended. You couple a dozen regular articles with usually five or six lengthy zoning amendments, then you've got a ballot that's four and five pages long. Inability to meaningfully impact the budget with the default budget in place, we just discussed that. The conservatives in our town actually became a bit disillusioned with SB 2. Inability for town officials or petitioners to explain the lobby for particular articles, leading to frustrations that votes are being cast without a full understanding of the issue. Inability to directly address the selectman, budget committee, town manager, and other officials. It's, it's unnerving to sit up there facing a town meeting if you're a budget committee member or a, or a selectman and you're getting direct questions from the audience, but it's the kind of thing that needs to happen. And also because of that, there's no feedback provided to the town government on the will, mood, or sentiment of the town issues. I appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Cowley, about the, or, sorry, the name is you, sir, about the intent to have, or the desire to have a, a strong mandate from the town on a particular voting issue. But I'll suggest to you that if, if 200 people show up to town meeting, and I think we can get the numbers back up into that range, once the pandemic is over, they represent a cross-section of the town. You're going to have conservatives there wanting to cut the budget, you're going to have liberals here who want to spend like crazy, and everybody in between. Each, uh, each issue has probably the same kind of representation at town meeting, traditionally meeting, as would the invalid voter. So when you get 200 people and you have a majority pass or a two-thirds majority pass upon the issue, you can be pretty certain that that is what the majority, the bulk of the town wants done. Deliberative session was poorly attended and did not fulfill its intended purpose. As mentioned earlier, that deliberative session is, ends up being basically a waste of time. When there's no opposition to the warrant article present at that deliberative session, the session seems kind of pointless to people that are there. Eventually, petitioners and other interest groups quit making the detailed presentations they normally made at town meeting. By the third and fourth year of SB 2, if I was wanting to petition an article, say, for support for some social service agency for some, some money, do I go to the deliberative session and make a presentation when there's going to be 20 people there who probably don't even care about the issue? If I don't go, I run the risk that, as mentioned earlier, that someone's going to come up with a mischief intent and amend my warrant article, all the work I just put into that petition article, bring it to the town meeting floor, doesn't get a chance to get voted on, at least not the way I intended. And so the sessions became a little more than the typical public hearing, but with the risk that some interest group, well, I already said that, excuse me. And finally, there was a lot of comments about people just missing one another and participating in the annual ritual. I have no quarrel with those who have asked us to reconsider this again 20 years later. It's a fair question to ask. To prove, prove my sincerity, I want you to know that I personally contacted the town administrator last week to tell him that I was concerned that the required notice for this very hearing had not yet been made, with time running out, knowing that it would be unfair to you if the article was declared invalid because the hearing had not happened as required by the RSA. In closing, and this is what I'm really concerned about, deterioration of social institutions in general, decline in civility and civic understanding, civic engagement. We see it all around us. Social service club memberships are down, religious institutions are barely surviving. Parent involvement in schools is often adversarial and we have few, if any, community rituals left that pull us together. If we eliminate town meeting, our town government will become more distant, our officials just names on a webpage, our citizens further separated from faceless bureaucrats. Now, this isn't hypothetical. We did this and that's what happened. If we eliminate town meeting, we give up the opportunity to confront question to our leaders in a large public setting. If we eliminate town meeting, most of us will never witness the art and skill of a well-stated opinion being made. If we eliminate town meeting, we won't be able to judge the sincerity of a speaker, a proponent or an opponent, or to understand the context of those expressing viewpoints if we are not present to hear and see them. Traditional town meeting has its challenges for sure. I'll be the first to admit that more can be done and should be done to improve the experience, as you mentioned, childcare. I'm certain we can get attendance numbers back to historic averages if we provide things like transportation, town meeting process guides, and welcoming advertising for newcomers. These are the things that I and my like-minded neighbors attending tonight are willing to orchestrate. But there's little we can do to soften the hard chairs or lessen the commitment you need to make to go to town meeting. If you come, you're there because you're fully engaged enough in issues to want to make a difference. Town meeting is hard work, sometimes unpleasant, occasionally enlightening, and now and then embarrassing, and oftentimes humorous. It may not seem worth it to you personally, but if you speak your mind at town meeting, it's always worth it to your community. I ask you to do all you can to encourage your friends and neighbors to attend this year and to vote for traditional town meeting, what Thomas Jefferson called the wisest invention ever devised by the wit of man for the perfect exercise of self-government. Thank you.
Further comments from those here or those attending online?
I just say I support everything Kim said.
Thank you.
And as a reminder, for those participating online, since we are in a new format that may not feel very familiar, there is a React button at the top. There's a hand that's held up and so you are muted. And if you would like to comment, then you push that button and you will be called on.
Yes? Yes.
When we moved here, it was in, this was the SB two phase, and we had no idea what was going on. You know, it takes a while to get into the groove of things. And when we went back to town meeting, it was just delightful, I mean, because you got to see people and you got to talk about issues. The idea that you get more people voting with SB two, possibly, but they probably aren't educated because very few people ever went out to that deliberative session, so they don't know what the issues are. I, I just, I think it's a step backwards for us. But that might be.
Yes.
Jim, I hear a lot of people talking about how a big problem is childcare. We're all here with our neighbors. If you need to go out and make a presentation or something, I'm sure somebody would be around to help you out. I have stood behind this camera holding babies more than once.
And you're more than happy to let them go under the camera and not really knock it over, as my child has done.
Thank you.
Well, as far as childcare goes, it seems to me that there are Scouts and 4-H, and National Honor Society, and kids are required to do community service and it would be fine for them to take care of the kids. When we're back in the school, parents can go and check on them. And there's a playground at Hughes Park, parents can go and check on them while ballots are being counted if they want to. But it seems to me that that is one of the, the major problems. My next door neighbors are kids with a 20-month-old and they don't know anything about what goes on in town. And I keep explaining to them, and I hope it does them good, but we really need childcare at town meeting. And I'm holding crepit, but I do what I couldn't help.
I, I think, I'd like to, I'm probably the only person with a child currently in this room. And you all have seen my child at meetings, so I am probably representative of a very different kind of parent, and I offer no apologies if I have to bring my child with me. That being said, I've also taken advantage of childcare in the past. I do not find people in my subset to be of the same mind. Certainly, we can offer it and try again, but I don't want you to think that's the only solution because I have, in many organizations, seen childcare widely offered by very trustworthy individuals who have a state license, and it's just not that well-used. And I, when I ask why, like, is it the childcare? That's not the answer I get because those of us who actively participate often bring our children because we grew up in the democratic process doing this and we think it's part of their education. So how do you convince somebody, and this is a question for all to think about because you've just all volunteered to do this, how do you convince people that it is worthwhile to participate in the democratic process and leave their child somewhere, right, either? So, because that is a very different concept than the way, say, I grew up, where my parents, you know, let me knock around under the table and I probably kicked everyone, everyone in this town once or twice. And I, or do we say, bring your child to town meeting? Well, I mean, I, I feel like we would be more welcoming if we said, bring your small hellion to town meeting, we would love to have them here to participate. That's just my personal belief, it's the same.
That's a great idea.
There, there's a picture in the Valley News from years ago of my daughter sitting on my lap at that town meeting. And it was before I became moderator, so it was a long time ago. And, but I, I think that it can't be instructed, that we can't take care of that. And, I mean, if, if, if that's all it takes, it's an excuse for not wanting to participate.
I'll just, I'll just put in too, we have been discussing your, your thought and I've talked through email with Kate. Finding an organization that would do it would be great, or a licensed provider. If the town was going to solicit volunteers, we have to do background checks and run them through the system and it would take weeks or months to get people vetted, so.
Well, that was one of the reasons I said maybe a service organization from the school could do it, that the town wouldn't have to do that. I knew about the background.
Yeah, we, we could ask a few people and we've been talking about who may be, may be able to do that, but it's just one of those, one of those things in the day that we.
Well, it feels like, Kate, that kids should, should be there, especially older kids, they need to learn how it is. And like I said when I started, town meeting is such a privilege to be able to live in a state where we have town meetings, where we can participate, and how our town is run. It just can't get any more important than that.
You had your hand up?
Yes. If the town were to provide childcare, it's going to be a liability issue.
If we were to actually do it, yes, but if we found a cervix organization or somebody that would take that responsibility.
But that would all, I would amend or incur a fee, would it not?
It depends who it is. Like she's.
Well, the Honor Society wouldn't be, I mean, that's, that's where the liability issue comes in, it's not somebody who's licensed to provide childcare, then the town.
The, the town or the organization. If you got an organization that would do it, then they would have to take that on, yeah.
Mr. Chase, did you have a comment to make? You're going to have to.
Hold on, I have to allow the mic, there we go.
Okay.
Unmute. Oh, he, you have yourself muted, you have to unmute yourself.
How is that?
Perfect.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate you taking my comment. I'll start, I'll begin by saying that I'd be the first to admit that I'm an uneducated voter as far as the town is concerned, and I suspect that I'm in the majority, not the minority. And so I am fully supportive of the idea of having a town meeting to help educate people, but I do not believe that the town meeting should be held at the expense of those people who are uneducated or unable to attend the meetings. And I think there needs to be some kind of a prevention or protection for taxpayers who can't get to the meeting, who are not technologically knowledgeable enough, such as myself, to, to participate via Zoom, and we're doing this because my wife's a lot smarter than me. But still, I, I, my concern is if the only people that really get to vote and have a say are the people that attend the meeting, even if you only have, even if you have all of 200 people there, they represent a small percentage of the taxpayers in this town. And I just don't believe that that's fair. Those people who are active participants, they get out their friends and get them to the meeting, there are a lot of elderly people who can't get out, who don't know what's going on, who are not on listserv, and do not have the access that some of the younger, more affluent people do. Yet they're still, they still have a right to vote because it's their money that's being spent. And so I'm sorry for being a complainer and I should be at the meeting, but at least I'm trying to watch via Zoom.
Thank you very much.
And I'd like to add, I think this counts as meeting attendance, we're all learning, it's new, but we welcome people to come in person or participate this way. I think it's, anytime we can give access to a meeting and offer participation is fantastic.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that my purpose is to change anyone's mind here tonight, I think people are pretty solid. I went to my first town meeting when I was in third grade, I fell in love with it. Two guys got up and were arguing, they were about ready to punch each other, then it was time to go downstairs and have lunch, because sat beside each other. And I don't know if I missed very many more until I went away for a while. When I came back, I became the moderator, I enjoyed it so much. And so town meeting was, was pretty special. But if you look at the numbers, 83 people were at last year's town meeting, take away selectmen, town employees, budget committee, how many people were there out of 3,700 people? And it's, it's a real small number that are making the decisions. I have a friend that was a selectman up north, and I asked her, I says, how, how did SB two work for you? She said, can't really tell you that there was a difference between the outcome of the votes for SB two versus town meeting. And so a lot of the fears and concerns, the vote's going to be pretty close to the same no matter which way you go. And so again, I'm not here trying to convince anybody to go away from town meeting, but, you know, this isn't the world it was in 1963 when I went to that first town meeting and people are acting very differently in terms of their voting. We saw it during the last national election when there were so many people who wanted to vote by mail versus actually having to show up, early voting, et cetera. I mean, it's a changed, changed situation, so don't let those fears concern you because the outcome is going to probably be the same one every vote.
Kurt Gotard did some research and I'm terrible with numbers, but his numbers showed that fewer people participated when there was SB two, that participated in the, fewer people participated in the deliberative session and fewer people voted. And maybe we're doing the whole wrong thing, maybe, maybe what we need to do is start a big publicity campaign and get people to realize that they need to come to town meeting. If you don't come and you don't vote, you can't complain.
I've never found that plays out very well, no matter how many times you say it. But I will say, people come regardless of whether it's SB two or town meeting, if there is a major issue that's a hot button issue, because if you want to see great turnout for SB two, you put a new school on the ballot, you try to run this, you try to run the superintendent out of town, or you tell everybody, hey, guess what, our friends, the Freestaters are counting us. And when you tell people they are being counted, suddenly there is a certain amount here, and they do, right? These are things that really happen in New Hampshire. So some of it is just about how interesting it is to be there and how compelling it is because in one form, when you abdicate your vote by not going, you are voting, you're saying you're relatively sure it will come out in your favor.
Dan.
Yeah, to put that point, Dr. Bofage, right, 30 people showed up for deliberative session this year. 200 people showed up when they were trying to get rid of Patrick Andrew.
No, 509.
509 people, okay?
And I took out a Facebook ad, just in case you want to know how that happened.
And that place was full, so Kate's right, if there's something on the ballot, people will show up for a deliberative session. Believe me, if, if the buildings were on a ballot, we were SB two, it would have been a lot of people in a deliberative session this year.
John, Nancy.
Oh, yes, excuse me.
The last two years, I think, are sort of an anomaly and I, I really hate to look at the numbers, I don't think they're representative. But the other thing that's changed in the last two years is that we're not mailing out our town report. And I, and it's bigger, and I don't know if we can just make it smaller again and mail it. I really think that that helps because people see the issues in front of them. Saying that you've got to come to the town office and pick up your town report doesn't cut it. Even new people in town don't know what a town report is. So I don't know why we need this big thing, can we get it back down to a small one and mail it? I mean, it's certainly, it's got to be worth the money.
See, I just wanted to comment on that, not that I'm opposed to mailing it, but when I worked in Weathersfield, we mailed them all out and you'd go to the post office and they were falling on the floor out of the recycling bin.
I don't, that's their choice.
This was the feedback we got.
Maybe make an attempt to get the word to the people. Or maybe you take a smaller subset of them.
And we did do mailer, I think you could potentially break it out into multiple parts. I think we could always revisit it, but we're not talking a couple hundred bucks or a couple that were, like, what was it, it was insane. You probably, was it 15?
Uh, $10,000.
$10,000, yeah, it's a big chunk of change, it's a lot more than you imagine. So, so, and I think we could always revisit that as a board.
There's a lot in the town report that is absolutely unnecessary also, it's just filler.
No, I read the whole thing with my breakfast.
Yeah, that's why you're sitting on that side of the table.
Because I actually listen to you guys, I know.
What if you mailed the warrant articles?
And the budget.
And the budget. What if you mailed a piece of the town report? That would be cheaper.
Want to get us a number and we can see what you have to make for a motion?
Well, and you could, you could still put it online for people to get it online, and some people would, but I want that paper one, I have a collection of town reports. When I sold my Hargrove House, the town reports went with the house.
Thank you. Dan, you look like you're about to say something?
No, not a word.
Okay.
I was getting to the point of we're off SB two.
I was thinking you were saying.
Okay, any final comments regarding SB two?
Thank you for the hearing.
Thank you for coming, really, appreciate it.
Come to the next select board meeting, we're going to have another fun hearing.
When is that?
Monday? Select board is this coming Monday.
Is that the one for expansion of the board?
And you know you're always a welcome at all of our meetings.
They're awesome.
They are, I wouldn't come here if it wasn't interesting.
Could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very, very much.